I don't think. He say what he was doing. Um, they're called zoom. Yes. Yes. I don't understand.
Philip, I'm here.
Hey Nick, hey there. Okay.
I got several meetings going on at one time.
Yes, okay. So you're you're online or?
I am.
Okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started this December the fifth twenty twenty two. It's one o'clock, a special uh commissioner court. I call a meeting order, we do have a forum acknowledging this is here today and open it up for public hearing.
That's right, Jack, you don't mind?
You got two minutes.
Good afternoon, Court, citizens. Let's start with transparency and accountability. I refer the Court to my Freedom of Information Act request of November one twenty twenty two regarding the master administration control for IT and to the Newton County solid waste financials. I question this Court and you Judge as why I have my FOIA request dated November one twenty twenty two, which is not only state law but federal law to be followed, not being complied with in the ten days as required, after repeated requests from the county clerk's office to do so. And please do not insult our intelligence claiming not to know anything about them. There's already public knowledge that all my FOIA requests go through you and the district attorney for approval before being released. And I'll also remind you that failure, uh Texas statute five five two point five three, failure or refusal uh officer for public information to provide access to or copying of public information. Uh section E and often some of this section is misdemeanor punishable by a fine of not more than one thousand dollars, confinement in the county jail for not more than six months, or both fine and con confinement, and F, a violation of this section constitutes an official misconduct. That's question number one. Question number two, uh to this Court and to the Judge is this. Knowing that you budgeted zero funding and are eliminating the grants department, why have you not prioritized the grants financials for end of year closeout for the county audit? Especially when the outside auditor, Charles Reed, personally requested this information on November third twenty twenty two, so that Newton County's twenty twenty two audit can be finalized before the end of December twenty twenty two. On the desk, yeah, stay good.
Thank you. Mr. Powell, you want number two?
Wait till you get to theirs.
Yes. All right. Hearing no other public uh hearing, uh closing. All right, number one, just appropriate approve the purchase of the model DS four five oh high throughout uh scanner, uh tabulator and support equipment and the software for election system and software for the harbor election security grant fund, KK, you explain that.
Um Liz had reached out, Liz Holloway had reached out to Melissa, Erks and Shannon. Uh this is a grant that has to do with election security. Uh we do have residue funds that were not used. Um Melissa, uh she was requesting a certain amount and then there was gonna be like seventy thousand left. If we didn't use them, then we would have to give them back. So upon researching the grant, um our paper-based tabulator and scanner qualifies for a purchase with this grant, this grant fund. This last election uh kinda did our scanner in. It's not repairable. We've had maintenance on it even prior rat prior to election and it's just it barely got us through this election. We've had maintenance done on it every year, our our routine maintenance. Uh it's just wear and tear because the machine is twenty years old. It is an obsolete machine. Um election system and software, they do have an updated and upgraded machine that is paper-based. So we will not be going, you know, fully uh electronic. But these funds have actually, in in my opinion, into my office, this is gonna be a blessing for us to be able to use these funds to buy this because I didn't quite honestly know where I was gonna come up with this amount of money for next year. So if the Court is willing to approve the purchase of this and approve us using these grant funds, these residue grant funds, um my office and I think the citizens would greatly appreciate it for elections.
Okay, I I see several amounts here and uh and the first one be the the sale order agreement, which is sixty three thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars.
Yes, sir.
And then it goes on over in schedule A and it is the whole of the hardware maintenance fee, software license, hardware license and the amount of ten thousand one hundred ten dollars, is that included in that?
Um what is included with what I'm asking for is the scanner and tabulator and the laptop and the programming that goes with it. My maintenance is budgeted, so the maintenance agreement is budgeted for the machine that we currently have, and it's gonna be pretty much the same.
Okay, in this first part, is it uh tablet in that? Is that included in that fifty six thousand?
Well, the the scanner and the tabulator itself is the sixty three nine ninety five and then the laptop and the programming that goes with it for that machine and that's just for reporting, all that is for. Um it's four thousand two hundred and ninety nine, so it brings a total of the sixty eight to ninety four. That's what I'm requesting from the Haba grant.
So the reporting uh standard standalone system purchase in order, I don't I don't need to be done? Which is uh, well, it's all included.
Yes, sir.
For that, I see.
And like I said, this is not to go electronic, but that will provide us to be able to securely back up electronically and with another outside source and press to report guessing test, which is the conditional backup for our election. So it does comply with.
Well, this is this is not money that will additionally cost the county, is it?
No, sir. No, sir, this is grant funds that we currently have, and if we don't utilize them, we have to give them back.
So i- is some some of this money also go toward Melissa or?
She and I have worked together and um the what she's asking for would be covered and then what I'm asking for would be covered.
Did she ask me to please uh table her agenda? So you know why?
Um, all I know is she's she's not available, she's sick, so she's not in today. Um so I can only assume it's because she's maybe not here to speak about it.
What I'm trying to get at here is we're we're not gonna uh spend all the money and leave her with nothing.
No, sir.
Come back and.
It's eighty thousand and what I'm asking for and what she's asking for, it's not quite the total amount. But she and I got together and discussed this in great detail, so it would both be covered.
So you said a while ago, our our election tabulator was way out of date and probably could be used anymore. Does that affect the election any?
No, sir. No, sir, it just, it's not the tabulation part, it's the actual scanner, it's just where it picks the ballots at. That's the issue with the scanner, is what's wrong with it.
Or do we pick up two at a time?
Oh, no, we're running them one at a time. Okay.
All right. All right. Y'all got any more questions? When uh this will be in uh installed before the next election?
Oh, yes, sir. We should, if if this is approved and everything, we should have the machines in like the next couple of weeks.
And so you're telling me the maintenance is covered already with?
I have, yes, sir, it's budgeted for maintenance for next year.
Okay. Much pleasure, the Court. Of of county, it's not gonna be a long-term maintenance fee, additional maintenance fee. I recommend we approve the purchase of it. Can't that kind of thing? Here, second.
Not second.
Motion is made, Mr. White and second, Mr. Benson would approve the purchase of the model DS four fifty uh high through all throughout the scanner and tabulator and supporting equipment and uh any more discussion? Not all in papers, yeah?
Ah.
Same as I oppose. I'm pass. And the two discussion, probably approve the bid for CR thirty one eleven, uh thirty one twelve, forty one twenty three located in precinct four. There was two bids received uh back uh a week or so ago, last week, I think. And uh it failed on, no second. So we're bringing it back up today to uh see what the pleasure of the Court is. And that and the amount was Gulf Coast was five thou- five hundred seventy five thousand two hundred and twenty nine forty and uh Apex Construction was eight hundred twenty two nine sixty five point eight. And uh so did we want to approve either of those?
Yeah, interesting.
This item that I'd ask the Speaker.
Yes, sir. You can speak now or you can wait till end of the discussion, whichever one you want to.
I'll speak now. So um these roads were unbudgeted and unplanned, as you all know. Um I've traveled both these roads even this morning. There's no base preparation in these roads, uh forty one twenty three currently has water standing on it. Uh I sent you folks a video of that. And uh if you look at the bids, the there's no framework lined out in the bids. Also, if you look at the bids, Apex bid is three hundred plus thousand for materials for thirty one eleven, whereas Gulf Coast bids is over just over a hundred thousand or more than a hundred thousand materials. Almost double the cost for materials from one contractor to the next. That just points that, you know, there's a discrepancy here, this is unbudgeted unplanned work as we're doing doing it the last hour. And that discrepancies and no no details around base preparations, I think you should vote to reject this these bids and not do this work. And last but not least, so as you all know, uh currently these roads are are dirt roads. Uh there's four residents that live on forty one twenty three and twenty two houses on thirty one eleven. But these are high areas of logging activities. If we asphalt these roads without good preparation or base work, what's gonna happen? In a very short period, they're gonna become impassable. The log trucks are gonna beat holes in the road because they're not properly prepared and we don't have the equipment in precinct four to repair these roads. Currently, when that happens, we can go in, haul in fill material, grade the roads back up and make a a workable road. But if we put the asphalt down, that's not gonna be the case. We're gonna be holes in asphalt, we're not gonna be able to prepare because we don't have the equipment to do those things. So I'm asking the Court this morning to reject these bids and not do this work. Mr. Palmer, was you able to hear that?
I was.
I was. Thank you. That's all I have to do.
Much pleasure, Court.
Good, Mary.
Yeah. Sure.
Uh for agenda item two, since the results of the main prime uh May primary election, Commissioner Thompson has been told to stop many times from spending any money from within precinct four by the voters who actually fund the money who he wants to spend. Now, just twenty seven days before he leaves office, Commissioner Thompson still wants to spend five hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars on three low priority roads. This is theft from the citizens. You commissioners took an oath to protect all county assets that belong to the taxpayer. The precincts you represent are not your kingdoms and you are supposed to vote on this Court to protect all the people of the county and all their money from the thieves among you. By passing this agenda item, those of you who vote yes will become the very thieves that people despise and they will will resent you and remember your actions in the future. Do not pass item number two.
Thank you. Much pleasure, Court.
You give your motion, Judge?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we accept bids from Gulf Coast to do the repairs on these roads.
Here, second. Nice second to that motion. So the motion been made, Mr. Thompson, and uh second by myself and uh.
Can I just make a statement?
Can you make a statement?
Yeah. I don't like being threatened.
Neither do I.
That's all I want to say.
Neither.
I'd like to make a statement also. I have talked to citizens down here and had a phone call from our uh previous sheriff and everything. Uh this this whole thing, uh it seemed to be a big political thing and uh I I don't uh make my decisions on political gain or uh failure. And I've talked to some folks and uh the previous commissioners and whatnot and and the thing about it, uh well, the the previous sheriff told me that uh Mr. Thompson had made a promise even before this year that about three years ago, he was gonna do his road. And uh after looking at it for long and hard, I realized that uh, yeah, it's the the name hour and it looks bad. But uh I think we the practice that we've had in this last three and a half, three and two third years is that uh commissioners in each uh precinct uh decide what need to be done in their in their precinct. And uh the thing about it is that uh if it wasn't a jumped up thing here in the last uh couple of months or so, uh which support the the rumors that he want to uh deplete his funds. Uh but the other half of it is that as a commissioner, you have the authority to uh do what you see fit for your precinct. I would hate to be uh in my community, and this is the thing I always try to do is put the shoe on the other foot. In my community, if I promised folk that their road was bad uh and and uh I hadn't got to do it even though it's ninety ninth and a half hour, uh if it's still possible, I'm gonna be trying to do everything I can to make it happen. Now, on the other hand, I heard very clearly what what Mr. Powell was saying. Uh and I I I agree with what he's saying, it definitely have to have some some foundation. And we all, all the commissioners and it don't have to be a commissioner realize that anytime you have excessive weight going across a uh piece of property, that you're gonna find all your soft spots and whatnot. And so we have to uh make sure, if we're gonna prove this, we need to make sure that they are gonna put uh foundation underneath it. And the thing that uh I hope and I I didn't get a chance to talk to Wayne Sweet over at Gulf Coast, but everything they do is supposed to be uh uh tech stock qualified, state qualified. And uh I just can't imagine them planning to put down some public road in because of their reputation, uh that's really putting theirself out there. And I really uh don't believe that they're gonna put a substandard road in. That's my my true belief. And after I looked at the funds, uh even though uh it's gonna cost five seventy five, apparently there's nine oh nine and some change in uh in that budget and in the last court session, Mr. Thompson uh informed us that he had been saving some of his uh uh grant refund money, which, you know, if I have to pay for something upfront, I expect, especially with the agreement, is that I'm gonna get it back. Uh I'm expecting it back and I'm planning on it. And so that's where I am, is that if if this is funds that he has actually uh spent and 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 saved to do projects that he's promised, that's a to- whole totally different uh outlook. Uh now, like I said, uh it's gonna be, it's nine oh nine, it's some change in there, nine, taking that five seventy five away, it's still gonna be about three thirty four and left in the funds of uh uh plus the current budget, plus the current budget. So that's not really a bad predicament. Uh though I wish we could have maybe uh did two of the roads and maybe not all three of them. Is that possible?
Well, they they're they were bid separately.
Can we uh choose uh the one, especially the one with the thirty something people on it? That's quite a few citizens, thirty something homes.
Well, you you realize, you know, the reason this is coming up now and all the work that we've done on the county roads, all the county roads, we didn't get our grant funds in to do this work until I think they started coming in in July. So we weren't sure, in fact, it was repeated several times, we weren't sure when we were gonna get those funds, even if we was gonna get them this year, but we did get them this year is the reason that I I wanna do the road.
Well, so as far as I'm concerned, if we can uh assure that that uh Gulf Coast is gonna put uh proper foundation underneath it, so I I.
Well, that's not in the bid.
Well, what is the bid?
No use to put two inches of asphalt, fine grade the road and uh I have done a lot of base work on Shepherd Road. I mean, on Sandpit Road, but I haven't done a whole lot on eleven and twelve. But uh I can spend some more of this money and do some base work on it.
Oh, we got the, we're Catholic.
But it it's got a good base under. Ninety per percent of that road has got good base under. You you graded it, preacher, would you, is that a fair statement?
You got some spots down there with no coverage or always washing out on them.
Yeah.
That he'll always keep in on.
Which road is that?
Thirty one eleven. Logging road.
That's the one with the thirty two or whatever residency, I don't remember the exact, man.
Both these roads go underwater?
Yeah, most ever road in precinct four goes underwater.
These roads go underwater in the next place.
Your road goes underwater and I pay you jurors, there wasn't nothing wrong with that one.
Log trucks don't run my road. This is a logging road, you know that clear.
Huh?
It's a logging road, you know that.
Yeah, well, so we're not gonna do any paving on any of the logging roads?
You pave a logging road and it gets tore up, how do you fix it?
You fix it.
With what equipment? It's non-existent. You can fix it the way it is.
Well, anyhow, I'd I'd ask you to approve it. And it's been second.
Any more discussion? Here or none? Uh all in favor, raise your right hand. Two. And raise your right hand to against. Right towards on the box. Yeah, man. Mr. Palmer, how you, how you?
Ah.
You're four. You're four, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Three. Okay, and again? The one against you abstain? One abstain? Okay. Number three to discuss and consider authorize and uh Goodman, Lester and Strong to advertise construction bid on GLO CDBG flood and and drainage project, project uh contract number twenty two dash oh eight two dash oh one eight and dash uh B two two four. Mr. Nick?
This is for the, as the judge said, the GLO mitigation project that's in precincts one, two and three. We met back in October and went through construction drawings on these projects. Uh the comments that y'all had, we've addressed them, we've sealed the plans. Uh they said it's to fix, it's to fix flood, place it on county roads that flood, uh old old wooden and steel bridges. We're gonna pull them out, replace them with with concrete, text up, text up quality bridges, uh off-system bridge structures and or concrete box covers, larger drain, larger drainage structures. Pardon the areas uh with rock rip rap. Raise the heights of the roads as needed to to increase, reduce flooding, provide evacuation routes for for residents to the to the text dot uh state highway system.
All this stuff has been uh pre-approved by GLO and it's just uh designed and the commissioners have received their drawings of what is gonna be done and where it's gonna be done, what's gonna be done.
That is correct.
So uh everybody is in the loop about this project. And to let everybody know, this is a fully funded project, it's no cost to the county.
That is correct. And this, what I'm what I'm requesting is permission to be able to advertise for bids. We won't do that until the environmental is cleared. The Mark Taylor with Trailer and Associates is is working on the environmental. So that once it's approved, we'll begin advertising for bids.
Yeah. Okay. When do you expect that to be?
Uh we're waiting to hear from him, I didn't, I was talking to him on the way down here, he was checking on everything, but I don't have a time for you right now.
If him or sir may well, he said that the uh environmental studies have been.
And it may, it may be complete at this at this moment in time, but if we can, we can set this approval contingent on environmental being being approved.
Well, we're just gonna authorize you to do it.
Yes.
Uh with the well contingency of it, and you can't go out for bid until it's done anyway.
That's correct.
Regarding.
I can't, I can't, we can't award it to a contractor until the environmental.
Exactly.
Is approved, we can't go out for bids, we just can't award.
This this affects three of the precincts, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I make that motion and we authorize them to go out and advertise bids.
Uh second.
Motion been made, Mr. White and second, Mr. Benson, we authorize Goodman, Lasper and Strong to advertise a construction bid for the GLO uh CDBG mid flood and drainage project. Uh any discussion? Mr. Kelly?
Number four?
Number three.
Three, now we're good.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sound. Oppose, hear none, pass. Number four, discuss and probably approve hourly rate for Ponte Enterprise Incorporated to assess Newton County and IT support. Uh we have reached out to several organizations trying to get an hourly rate and uh they just won't hardly give you an hourly rate without some kind of attachments to it. So uh Mr. Dan, you got anything else? We've got eighty-nine hundred dollars left over in this year's budget, uh, after he canceled his contract of November, uh, end of the month. So we still haven't much left over. And uh, we've already got some calls from offices as wanting questions answered or help for this. And, and we don't have anybody that we could send them to other than Shannon. So I'm putting it on the agenda today to, to maybe hire him by the hour to uh assist us to, in, in this program. I think you've, you've had some issues, haven't you, Sher?
Always had issues too. Just got a new one today. But uh, yeah, we need someone that's gonna be knowledgeable, he's knowledgeable with the system. Got to get the start right. Any, you know, uh, problems with the calendar?
We do have a, one quote from a, uh, Mike Brooks, uh, from Beaumont, I think.
Just one note on that, when you're dealing with the sheriff's office stuff, there is some security plans that you gotta pass to be able to handle some offices, files and things like that, just to make that.
Yeah, SUGS. SUGS required.
Yeah. And so uh, Mr. Brooks has requested uh twenty-five eighty, just a startup fee, just initial contact. And then uh, he's forty-one fifty-five on a monthly fee. Uh, and that's just basic stuff that he'd be doing from the Beaumont office and not coming here. Uh, and if this were to be, have to come to Newton County, it'd be mileage and uh also uh other time. And, and any cables or any connections or anything would be extra. How much do you say we had left? Eighty-nine hundred dollars.
Eighty-nine hundred, thank you.
There's no overtime in your book.
Right, and I, that's what I had stated in it, um, just, it's, flat or whatever that your budget can afford, so happens to support y'all. Especially, I didn't put an end date on it, but I was gonna let y'all decide. I basically wanted to be here to support y'all through the end of this term through December. Um, I think the new administration had a new plan. I was gonna support y'all through December to get through this time period. And then, you know, we'll see what they go with uh after that point. But with, with your budget allows for, figure out with the current rates or out there, whatever y'all decide. And no, there won't be any overtime, there won't be basically all of that. Just like our, our last contract, but it's going from instead of monthly to hourly. But there was no mileage in the last contract, any of that stuff. So it's going from monthly to hourly.
So I need uh approval or hourly rate. Uh, whichever one y'all wanna go with, uh, so don't give me no options hourly. So.
Do you know how much, uh, your, what is your hourly rate?
Whatever y'all decide. I wanna go all around and figure out that.
And, and we did do that, then we called.
Like the P, it'll be seventy-five an hour. Um, but find the, the fair rate around here, find the, and, and prices vary, um, depending on what kind of work you have going on, what kind of network, things like that. And it can vary, but from contractors between seventy-five and a hundred and fifty an hour. Um, it's gonna start at seventy-five, but if your budget only allows fifty dollars an hour, let's set it for that for right now, let's get to December. We don't wanna leave a sheriff department or anybody in the behind.
At seventy-five dollars an hour, be a hundred and eighteen hours. Or finish out this month. Just thought I sold out there.
Speaking from a commissioner court standpoint, I'd like to think that we would not sharp a dedicated person that uh trying to do us a good job. What I'm saying is if the bottom entry rate for any, any tech in Texas is seven to five, that's what we ought to go with. I don't think that we ought to uh take advantage of of a man because he wants to uh be dedicated to helping us. And that's a penalty in my opinion, uh, because we couldn't get nobody else understanding five dollars to come and do what he do. Plus the fact, going forward, and I have every night, I think about this, going forward. We got some situations that we are not fully aware of, I think, of the new plan and whatnot. And I don't wanna set us up for failure. This man probably has what, a hundred and tw- thirty or two hundred and some items that, that has uh an ongoing uh situation with, and whoever come to take his place. We need him to know at least the basics of what we got to deal with. And we don't, what I'm saying, I don't want us to just make us wild, uh, move and throw away everything we got. And uh, here in a month, a couple of months, we sitting out there like uh a man with no life jacket in the middle of the ocean. Uh, I know we all got some great ideas and probably got some good experiences. But I know for a fact that this, this system that we have over here, uh, it went from a, a dinosaur system to a new modern technology system. And it wasn't done from, from A to Z at one time, cause all of it don't fit. So we need to take all those things into consideration. We appreciate y'all's concern and, and I'm, I'm concerned just as well as my citizens are of Newton County. And uh, yeah, we, we need to, everything we do, we look, need to look at it closely and try to do it better. But we can't just, you know, like I said, we, you don't hop off a, a perfect good boat into the ocean and hoping that somebody come through and rescue. And so that's where I'm at with that. I, I really would hope that we would make a wise enough decision and keep him around long enough, at least to show of someone else uh what we got and, and where we need to uh go, at least where we being. We don't know where we're going if we don't know where we being. That's where I'm at on that. Appreciate the time. New York's Creek now.
Commissioner White, that was excellent. I agree a hundred percent.
Yes.
My only issue is that uh, for the judge, he made Shannon IT administrator. I still have a lawyer request from November one asking how the IT management and codes and everything are laid out protected, given to each director of department. So that when this contract does end, if it does end, or if he gets hit by a bus, we can continue. So let's get with the program and following the rules, being transparent, accountable. I have no issues with maintaining the IT system, the eighty-nine hundred bucks. I have an issue with the way the last contract was, but we're going forward. I would hope that you would uh honor letter the law person.
Uh, what's the court say? I recommend that we uh keep Mr. Panier around on an hourly basis. And that's not making a continuous long-term co- uh contract that's on an hourly basis as we go. At a minimum seventy-five dollars per hour, with no overtime and all these stipulations he have in his proposal.
I second.
Motion made by Mr. White and second, Mr. Thompson, that we approve the seventy-five dollars per hourly rate for Punchay Enterprises uh to assess Newton County IT support. Any more discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sound, pose, hear none, pass. Okay, number five is to present bids to relocate single mod uh fiber from the appraisal office to the tax office as referred in the special session of November the seventh, twenty twenty-two, item number three. And that was to go out for bids and did we fit, did we receive any? And did we have any?
Yes.
Is it in our packet? Okay, the first one is, is from Discovery, it's twenty-five ninety-three sixteen. And the second one is MHC Datacom for twenty-nine forty. And ITF. It's four thousand three hundred and eighty-three forty-six. Well, that's the bids that I have. Y'all make a note or y'all have it in your packet?
I didn't know my.
Okay, no action on number five. That's just a statement as, as, as a bid. Number six is discussing appropriate approved bids to relocate, relocate the single mod fiber from appraisal office to tax office as referred to the special session, November the seventh, twenty twenty-two, item number three. And you, y'all heard those bids, so what's y'all's pleasure? One more time. What's y'all's pleasure on item number six?
Are they uh, all these doing what they do? Reproport companies?
The um, the MHC is the only one that we have experience with, they're the one that ran the barber from your office to the nude trailer. The others I'm not familiar with.
They done made a good job.
I just wanted to throw that out there. And they've done that job and a few other.
With that information, I like the MHC Datacom Corporation receiving.
You make out a motion?
Yes.
You're second.
I'm second.
Motion made by Mr. Bit, second, Mr. White, that we uh authorize or approves HMC as a contractor to relocate the fiber from appraisal office to the tax office. Any more discussion?
What was that uh bid amount again, please, with that company?
The bid amount is twenty-nine forty.
No discussion.
Any more discussion? Hear none? Uh, that's the approval of, of motion by saying aye?
Aye.
I oppose. Hear none, pass. Number seven, discussing probably approve uh twenty-twenty-three Newton County holiday schedule. Uh, that's in y'all's packet and I think there's seventeen days all, you know, they've changed except for the dates that would be uh follow.
Judge?
Yeah.
I'm fixing to have to leave you to start the other meeting.
Okay, I appreciate it. What percentage of offices are on a, a four-day work schedule, uh, do we have any idea? I don't know what percentage of it, it's, it's major here, wouldn't you think? I guess, well, there's four commissioners.
And JP, JP's are on uh something, I, some of them are anyway.
Yeah.
Sure, we are, I, my offices, we're open five days a week.
Yeah. So how?
My girls, Martha is off on Mondays, Christie's off on Fridays with the office and stuff the whole week. And they do do four teams, and I think the other two offices.
I, I guess my concern is uh, uh, the number of holidays, uh, all of those holidays, federal holidays, we have what, about three or four that's not a federal holiday. And uh, I have a, a four workday uh schedule. And uh, those weeks that we have holidays on, uh, we, they, they quite often. And uh, we don't work enough days, I don't think, to continue to increase holidays because uh and I was wondering if we could reduce that by one or anything with, kinda help. Cause I know there's a couple of holidays where we are off and there, uh, we're off and everybody else is working. And that don't, that don't sit very well with me. Cause we get already so many three-day weekends and a holiday throw it in there, that's a four-day weekend and that, that comes every other month, look like every month, look like.
Think you missed one month.
That's what I'm saying. And we can't keep up with the amount of road that we have working three days a week. And that's, that's my concern. Some reason I don't have a counter in my. So, so for the motion to be made to accept those holidays, would you like to express your opinion, which one you would like to take off? I said you'd like to take off one, so is it New Year's or Christmas or Thanksgiving or? No, it's not a major one. I know we had Fair Day and what other day was that in the? Yeah, I just threw that out there and I want the, the, the court to maybe consider it or what would you feel good about or? I mean, that was just my, one man's opinion. It's no how to so.
It was always sixteen days until Emancipation Day was added last year, I mean seventeen.
I know. Yeah, and we can't take one off without taking the other off, so. I mean, we know those are, be very contro- controversial and we don't wanna get involved with that.
I know, at one time, yeah, Fair Day was important, cause I'm sure a lot of employees are missing to be out at Last Talk Show, but I don't know if that's the case anymore, I don't know if.
Yeah, that's a good.
People have exhibitors, but that was wise, cause the Last Talk Show is all day Friday, starting early, so I know I'll be out there helping, but I don't know how many, how many employees that affects. That was, I think, the reason probably behind it.
Well, how many in here that need to take off to go to, go to that? We got anybody in here for us?
My child gets old enough to go off.
Oh, boy. Like I said.
Texas is in the cabinet state, that's a federal holiday.
I don't think so. Well, I think there's more.
The one that originated was, we were over here in the appraisal district with Marjorie here and the courthouse burned down. But she took that holiday and she didn't, Susan. Have people coming in or having to go. how people coming in are having to go to the back of the building because they were, they were closed on Texas Indian State. That's where that came in. That was that small, we got that with the banks and everything's open.
That's the one that would work for me.
Firstly, myself, I think we ought to leave the way it is. That's one man's opinion.
Okay, I hear a motion, one or another.
I make a motion, we leave as is.
Here a second? I second that motion. Motion been made, Mr. Benson and, uh, second, myself, as we approve the twenty-twenty-three, uh, Newton County holiday schedule as presented in discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign, oppose? Pass. Okay, number eight, discussing appropriate approved, uh, proposed pointies for the twenty-twenty-three Newton County Historical Commission, there's, uh, to be held. These, uh, positions hold a two-year term in January one, twenty twenty-three. John Jefferson.
Same list we've been pressing with. I think everybody's up for it. All we need is, we're on it for two years, Ben.
Okay, before, before we get off into it, is everybody willing to serve?
Yes.
All right.
Now, are you happy the way it is?
I make that motion to, uh, accept in list, uh, of the board members pointies for the twenty-two-three Newton County Historical Commission.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second, Mr. Benson, we approve the pro- uh, the proposed pointies for twenty-twenty-three as presented by Mr. John Jefferson, uh, starting, uh, January one, twenty twenty-three. Discussion. I hear none, uh, all, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign, oppose? Here none, pass. Okay, number nine has been requested to be removed. Number ten is discussion, uh, and accept the new impound fee for the livestock costs, Mr. Sheriff.
Judge, permission, public out there. Uh, I changed it, of course, uh, I think shortly after I got, uh, placed in office about the livestock program, about the fees. And I pulled this from the, this clerk's office, uh, that that we have had a hundred and fifty now as of today livestock calls from which we had a dispatch and stop. Also, when, uh, the way the program goes, that we sent a deputy out there to try to get that animal back in fence or the area where it will not be a hazard on the roadway and caused damage. Uh, this weekend we had two cows hit, killed, uh, two set for accidents. Had another cow that was, uh, crippled and had to be dispatched. Uh, this was Saturday. Uh, I was out there even myself trying to herd this one cow that would going in and out of the, uh, roadway. And, uh, he was kind of aggressive. And, uh, he ran in the wood. But, uh, the thing about it, uh, we have had, uh, a lot of calls this year. Uh, our budget for the stopness program is overdrawn. Um, and I'm going to read our livestock cost. You should have a copy of that. It is, we pay our stopmen sixty-five dollars per hour. And, um, to go out and to wrangle his stray where it be horses, cows, uh, uh, of that nature. Now, we've been, we increased the fees of ten dollars, uh, when I first came in the office. And, uh, the statute said we can charge up to twenty-five dollars. So we're gonna ask for sixty-five dollars per hour, that's to cover our stopmen's cost to go out there and twenty-five dollars per day for boarding, um, and feeding the animal until the owner comes pick him up. There's a twenty-dollar fee for advertising in the newspaper by statute, we have advertised that we have, uh, such animal. And if they do not get picked up in the required amount of time, fourteen days, I think, uh, they're taken to the cell barn and that's a hundred ninety-five dollar fee taken to the cell barn. There is a forty-dollar cogent test cost that we have to be formed on animal. And if we have to, um, wrangle a four, uh, and I, and I state the stray, if the stray must be caught, one hundred dollars may, may be charged to the stray owner. Uh, I did research around the state on other counties, uh, about their cost and this is in line. I think for us to be able to maintain a safe environment for our citizens, we should be able to recruit this money that we spent to make this program a success. Uh, what I asked the general public to do, being an animal owner myself, he etches out is we don't want your animals. We do not want your animals. We want you, we try to, uh, get your animals back in your fence if they're, we can do such a thing because we don't want your animal. We don't want them, innocent animals, be killed out there on the roadway and cause damage to, uh, someone's else's property and injury to the driver. Uh, so again, hundred and fifty calls a day. We have answered that has to do with livestock.
Right.
In the roadway. Yeah, so that's, that's a small thing to ask. And we work with people. Uh, right now we have a cow and two calves and six duckers.
Everybody getting rid of dogs.
So I have spent, I have spent, uh, this last, uh, week, they send livestock. Okay, and the stopmen, we have two good stopmen, uh, that work with us. And, uh, they've done, uh, a heck of a job in doing so. And, uh, we want to make sure that we stay solvent in this program and that county don't go bust, I, more on trying to get this program, uh, going like it should be. So I am available, uh, to answer any questions. I think this is reasonable fees and everything, and I think we've done a yelma's job in trying to keep the county safe, uh, lose this stray on the railways.
So, uh, no, no other categories going up, with the exception of the per animal per day. Is that right?
Yeah, the twenty, the twenty-five dollars per day is the only thing that's going up. And as you know, the sixty-five dollars per hour was already on the books. It's just that we haven't been charging, we're gonna charge it now though. Okay? I didn't know it was on the books like that, but anyway. And the hundred dollars, uh, catch fee, that will, that may be charged, according on how many times the, the, uh, stopmans have to go out there. Like this weekend, Saturday, I think they went out there two or three times and again yesterday. And that doesn't even include the deputies out there, uh, trying to make sure that keep the animals off the roadway.
Question, Sheriff, have you, uh, publicized that, put it in the paper? Uh, they, that it's gonna be a fee, so everybody, they can't say, I didn't know that and that kind of thing.
Yeah, we, we're gonna, once this get approved, we will put notice out and give ample enough time for it to settle in. Uh, we, uh, I put some, uh, things, comments in our, uh, weekly report on, on this program. Uh, so yes, that's, that's regular, uh, that's the standard operating procedure, give the public the chance to understand uh, the costs going on. If we're showing that.
There's, there's no open range in Newton County, right?
I don't, I have.
Yes, yes, but that's a different issue.
Hmm.
Another set of rules.
Okay.
Right. And I didn't want to confuse the both, the two together because and once, once all the, the maps have been, the boundaries have been, uh, found and given, so I suppose we'll publicize that as well.
Okay.
I appreciate you. Yeah.
All right, man.
All right.
Any more questions, Sheriff?
Thank you.
All right. What's your pleasure, Court, on item number ten? I make the motion that we, uh, accept the new impound fees. Be responsible. Hold it.
My second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second, Mr. Thompson, that we, uh, raise the fee from twenty-five to a hundred dollars for the impound fee for the livestock cost for Newton County. For, for the land, uh, homeowner of the stray animal owner. I'll get right in a minute. Any more discussion? Uh, here's no more discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign, oppose? Here none, pass. Okay, number eleven, discuss appropriate approved payments of bills on December the first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, we have missed that date and we're, but that's still the date that y'all had cut off, right?
Yes. Right, Ms. Morris in the meeting, so I'm gonna read them out to y'all. General fund, three hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and five dollars and seventy cents. Road and Bridge General, twelve hundred. Commissioner's Special Precinct One, nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and two cents. Commissioner's Special Precinct Two, twenty-five thousand, one sixty-three, seventy-one. Commissioner's Special Precinct Three, one thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-five cents. Commissioner's Special Precinct Four, twenty-two thousand, five seventy-two fifteen. Dedicated Road Precinct One, five thousand, three fifty-three, eighty-one. Dedicated Road Precinct Two, five thousand, three fifty-three, eighty-two. Dedicated Road Precinct Three, five thousand, three fifty-three, eighty-two. Dedicated Road Precinct Four, five thousand, three fifty-three, eighty-two. Solid Waste Disposal, six thousand, one sixty-eight, ninety-five. Newton County Library, five forty-five, oh, eight. FEMA Grants, eight thousand. Grants, seventy-seven thousand, two ninety-four. Technology Fund, fifty dollars and two cents with a total of five hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-five cents.
Okay, Commissioners, on, uh, your dedicated road at five thousand, three hundred and fifty-two, eighty-two is a payback to Cottonwood through a lawsuit. All the appraisal district has been up for a portion that y'all had to pay back this year. And that's what that's for.
That's right, and the, the, um, also out of the general fund, well, that's the next agenda thing. But the hundred and sixty-eight thousand come out of general.
Yes, the hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars comes out of the general fund, which cannot be paid through the ARPA, ARPA money.
Right.
So, uh, when you look at that, uh, general fund taking, you know, everything be paid out of the ARPA, it's just, that's not correct.
Right.
Uh.
I have the ARPA amount too, though, that will be paid.
Okay. I hear the, a motion to approve to pay those bills? Make it much.
Judge, since number nine was tabled, it is on the bills to pay. It's underneath the, um, on page seven. It's the first item, the, um, computer data. That nine thousand dollars was first, it wasn't approved today. Oh. And I didn't know that.
Yeah. And could you make any corrections?
Yes, sir.
Because, uh, that, that item was not, uh, addressed. So, uh, we're not approving. We shouldn't approve it.
Right.
Except the Commissioners.
Right.
Say what they want to do. So they're probably approving payment of bills. Need to understand what it's for.
Yeah. So go back and redo it and take that out, Elizabeth, and send it back to him.
Yeah, that'd be underneath the grants, right?
Yes, it's under grants.
Yes.
Yeah, you're at motion. I make the motion, we approve the bills, uh, with the exception of, of item number six. Item number nine, excuse me. Item number nine on the agenda, today's agenda.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second, Mr. Benson, that we approve paying the bills with the exception of the nine thousand dollars that was requested in item number nine, uh, that was took, uh, off of the agenda. So that would be reduced, uh, by nine thousand dollars in this camp yield fee, then they're corrected a copy. Uh, any more, any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign, oppose? Here none, pass. Yes, and appropriate approved expenditures funds, uh, in the amount not to extend, exceed two hundred thousand dollars, December first, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, the amount of ARPA funds will be a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven ninety-seven, eleven.
Is that taking away the, the nine thousand?
No, that was in grants, that'll come out of general.
You're, you're exactly right. Thank you for very for me. I hear a motion.
I make that motion.
Motion been made by Mr. Benson and second, Mr. White, we pay the monthly bills of one hundred and fifty-nine, seven ninety-seven point eleven as that would come out of the ARPA money. Uh, any discussion?
I stated on ARPA standards.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign, oppose? Here none, pass. Your motion to adjourn. Don't move. Second. Motion been made by Mr. Thompson, third, to adjourn ten minutes after two.